Are we getting all the way across? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the city council meeting of September 9th, 2025. Won't you please join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Could I start with the roll call, please?
Edgewood?
Here.
Conley?
Here.
Daniel?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Tufan?
Yes.
Thank you. Just a reminder, for those at the table and those in the audience, if you would please take just a moment to make sure that your phones are on do not disturb, it would be silenced your ears would be greatly appreciated. Also, just for public notice, there are actually a few different opportunities on the agenda that we will be opening up for public comment. One is right after the mayor's comment. There is another one at the end of the meeting as well, and we go to folks that are online as well as those in the chamber. And then during the action portion of the agenda, we'll have public comment on every action item that's available. Sometimes it seems like a little bit long that we go around and there's not any public comment, but at the same time, it's what the rules are, and so we want to make sure we accommodate that. So with that in mind, let me start by first getting an adoption of the, a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as written.
A second.
All right. I have a motion from council member Conley and a second from council member Ronnie. Any discussion at the table? All right, hearing none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Tufan?
Yes.
Six oh, the motion passes. I'll entertain a motion for the minutes of August 26th.
I move to approve the minutes of August 26th, 2025.
A second.
Have a motion from council member Conley, a second from council member Daniel. Discussion at the table. Hearing none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Tufan?
Yes.
And if I'm rushing that, please feel free to stop me. I think I was giving it some time there, but just in case. All right. Entertain a motion on warrants payable.
I move to approve warrants payable in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred twenty-two and thirteen cents.
I second.
Motion from council member Ronnie, second from council member Conley. Discussion at the table. In fact, let me start with those who signed the warrants.
Yes.
I have a few listed here, in case you're curious how we spent a million dollars. The vacuum truck has been built, as we speak, in North Carolina is five hundred and twenty-three thousand. The bypass is two fifty-four, and then there's usual fifty thousand to Republic, seventeen to Northwest Energy, and twelve thousand for Cottonwood Trees, and you'll be happy to know that even trees reach a mortality spiral. So, they chalk themselves out. I'm not saying anything, I'm just saying.
I don't know if that makes me nervous. And I think, just a clarification, my understanding is the back truck is in.
Oh.
So, it was ordered, it was part of last year's budget, we ordered it, and it took a year, but we didn't give them the money until the back truck came in.
I did not know who had a license, I can't wait to see it.
Yeah.
Is that the truck we've been seeing all over town?
The really pretty.
The pretty, pretty big one?
It may or may not be, because we also have the sewer folks in town that are doing the sewer, and theirs is a big, pretty one too, so.
Yep.
I have, I have not done a tour of it yet, so.
Well, for that kind of money, I think we should have a public open house, and everyone gets to do it through a.
Break a bottle of champagne across a sewer truck, a back truck?
We drive.
We'll take that into account. Any other discussion at the table on warrants?
No, I think I uncovered it.
Thank you.
All right, hearing none, may I get a vote, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Tufan?
Yes.
Six oh, motion passes. At this point, it's opportunity for mayor's comments. This is where I get to discuss things that are happening in the city, as well as follow-up on homework assignments that I've been requested to follow up with on council. So, a couple of things for the public to be aware of. City Hall is going to have very, very limited capability on Thursday and Friday of this week. And in fact, for practical purposes, we're going to be closed. There's gonna be no power here. We will have the phones being forwarded, they will be answered, there will be delays in emails, but even if you get staff on the other end, they're gonna have very limited functionality because the machines are not going to be up in the networks, et cetera. So that, we're planning that for Thursday and Friday. If we get to get open a little bit early on Friday, then everybody can be pleasantly surprised. But the plan is to be down on Thursday and Friday. Rocky Fork. The, uh, their name just skipped my mind right now all of a sudden. The company that we've out, that's overseeing that for us, did get their response into DEQ. Today, DEQ has promised us a quick review and turnaround. I'm hoping by the end of this week we'll hear, which if that happens, then that means it'll go in the newspaper next week, prior to our next council meeting. So what I'm hoping is that our next council meeting, we'll say that the newspaper ad has been already out for a week, and that basically runs for fifteen days. We have to address any public comments or concerns about that, and then there will be much rejoicing. So I'm hoping, I'm hoping we're within three to four weeks now of, I promise it'll go away a lot quicker than the bureaucracy getting there half.
Red tape, yay.
All right. On the, on the subject of red tape, we did hear from MDOT. This was who we had applied for the Brewery Hill Trail Project. We did not get selected. We had a, we met with the engineering company and with them yesterday and talked about why we didn't and what some of their concerns were, what their feedback is. The short version is, we will be resubmitting in the spring of 2027 with the feedback that we've got. I believe, one of the things that they suggested, is they had talked about phase projects, and actually, one of their concerns that was really interesting is that our engineering was at, figured at thirteen percent, and that didn't include the thirty thousand we already spent on it. But they said, well, we just don't have a high level of confidence because you didn't spend twenty-five to thirty percent on engineering. And that was literally part of their concern. So, so, the engineering company, the company that put together the grant force is working on that. But one of the things that I would like council to think about, as the conversation, we started talking about staging that, is that the top half of that, from Lazy M down to where the crosswalk was slated to be, down in front of Alpine, is actually the less expensive part of that project, probably two or three hundred thousand dollars. Do we want to consider looking at that as a project using U R P dollars, which we can use because that's within that area, and that's one of those projects that's outlined, and/or, and/or resort tax dollars? So, we don't have to make a decision today, just a thought process. Council member, Tufan?
From Lazy M down to Alpine?
Mm-hmm.
That section.
Just, just that section. And because of the conversation about staging it, do we do the first or the bottom, and what happens, and part of it was improving our odds for next time, and they were worried that we were right up against the, I think what they thought is, they're at the budget, so they put in the numbers to make it work. That was, and they didn't reach out, and that was just kind of their assumption that came out of that. I will tell you, there were two other projects that were at the budgets that did make the cut line, but they were basically sidewalks across big flat fields. And so, they were concerned that we have a grade and that we have water in the proximity. So, so, anyway, what I guess that is, it's, it's only mostly dead, not dead. We do plan on resubmitting, and we had their encouragement, and we'll shoot for next time.
Not dead, it just smells funny.
There we go. Yeah.
He's doing good.
I would, I would like to acknowledge, just given that the time of year and week that is, that this week is nine eleven, so it's a time that we particularly reach out to our police folks and our fire folks and say thank you. I'm aware that the Elks are doing something at ten o'clock on Thursday that the community is invited to. But the other thing I will add out is, we have residents in New York who reached out to get patches for our police and fire department, and I have sent those, and they will be going up at an Irish pub that is at ground zero. So Red Lodge will be represented at that spot. I thought that was kind of cool. Cleanup Day is currently scheduled for mid-October, the seventeenth. That's subject to change. It felt a little later than it has been in past years, but we'll, we'll let folks know. To me, it felt like it's been the end of September. Council president Ronnie said she thought it was like the first week in October, but that's the discussion that's going on, it's about change. But for now, mid-October is what we're looking at for Cleanup Day. Dog Swim Day was last week. I would say, particularly given it had very minimal notice, a couple of days' notice, that it was a success. We had thirty dogs show up, there were no dogfights or bad issues, the dogs had great fun, were totally pooped out, and, well, yeah, that was the end. I'm glad that there will be a winter of sun and snow on the greens before the people lay flat, speaking of which. But, but I was there when they pulled the filters out of the pool, and you couldn't tell, it had no impact at all, so.
Really?
We had been advised going in that there was no impact to the pool. They shocked it that night, they went ahead and drained it. It's still not completely decommissioned, that's probably gonna happen within the next week or two. We're having that professionally done, they're coming in to do that, just to make sure we don't have the cost we did a few years ago where, where a heater didn't last but a year or two. The standard consensus is, yes, we will be doing it again next year. Lots of fun pictures, not as fun as the moose, but lots of fun pictures.
Oh, my God.
All right. The Main Street Grant closed out, so this was the downtown master plan and the growth policy, we got those adopted, and we got, went ahead and got the reimbursement for that. So just to share with you that that's done. Public Works, we've already mentioned that the new back truck is in. The water bypass, they have made it up to about Twenty Second Street, which is the first part that they had identified was gonna be really slow, and lots of problems and technical things. They plan on having that section of the road done by tomorrow, and they will continue working up the hill. We may not really be behind schedule, it was anticipated the first half was gonna be slow, and the second half was gonna be not as slow. But there's a little bit of fingers crossing and hoping we get that done before we get wintered out. That's the sixteen-inch bypass going up White. Right now, it's slated to be done and White be fully available by the end of October. The sewer lining project is a little bit ahead of schedule, that could be the truck that you're seeing around. It's, for the public, that's a really cool process. We have a lot of old sewer pipes and clay stuff that leasing has problems, and they go in and they basically shoot a resin around the inside of the pipes, and it cures for about four hours, and then you have a new pipe that's inside of that. So they're taking care of that. We actually gave them the notice to proceed with work on that today. There are some businesses that are gonna be impacted. I have a PDF that will be up after tomorrow of all the spots that are impacted by that. They are going around and talking to businesses and residents before they go in and do that. Basically what happens is there's about an eight-hour shutdown that happens when they do it, because they have to set up for four hours, and then they go inside and they drill back out to put a hole in where the service lines are coming in. So they're working with the restaurants and planning it with the restaurants, so they do that stretch when the restaurants are planned to be closed that day. For residences, there probably won't be a significant issue, but the pipes going down to that'll probably handle two or three flushes, maybe a few more, but they'll be notified just, you know, don't, don't take long showers that day until it has a chance to set up. But no outage is scheduled to be more than eight hours. Okay? And again, I'll have that PDF that's out. We are sending that to the Red Lodge Business Alliance as well. We had a discussion from them yesterday. The business owners that have worked with the contractor, anybody has concerns, is welcome to call into the front office, and we will refer them to the contractor. But all of the interactions thus far have been very, very positive, very accommodating, very professional. The curbstop replacement project up at the golf course is done. There's several triflexes up there that were all on a shared line with Mega Leaks. We do have a couple of other leaks in town, one over by Rock Creek, and then there's one up by YWS that they're, they're working. And there's just, from a public works standpoint, there's just a lot of little stuff they're trying to get done before the season close out. So, the skate park, you'll recall, somebody's kind of talking about the little spider cracks that are there, that's been on the, on the project of getting done. But at the same time, we've got a million-dollar water project, and about that, the sewer project, and potentially some EDA stuff coming in as well. We haven't heard, there may be some work with the roads starting this year, but it looks like it's mostly gonna be next spring. Also Pride Park, we are moving forward with that, so Public Works is working with the garden club and the Parks Board. There was a time where we were thinking we might get that done this fall, but the goal is to get it done during the shoulder seasons. At this point, if I were placing bets, I'd say it's probably gonna be in early spring, but it will not be during our main tourist season. We'll get the work done so that Pride Park is not decommissioned during our busiest times of the year. The last thing, from a public works standpoint, is with the budget passed of the fifty-fifty cost share on the sidewalk program, Public Works, so that was part of our budget that we passed, we've set fifty thousand aside to help promote sidewalks getting done within the city. Mike is pulling together stuff from a couple of different communities in the state that have done that, and will be handing that off to Public Works, and they've been asked to put together a program and what that looks like before spring of next year, so that we can utilize that to get some sidewalks done.
When can people apply for that?
As soon as we know what that application process and process looks like. So next spring. So I did have, I did have somebody reach out, because we had some folks that were already doing sidewalks this fall, and, and it's just, it's gonna take some time to put together that program, to make sure it's fair and equitable, and that'll ultimately be council who sets up what that program is and how it works, if there're gonna be caps. And Public Works is also looking at some other options to bring that cost down, so like destroying the old sidewalk and hauling it out of there, that stuff we can do to help get the cost down. So, there's, there's a few other things to look at, but now that we have it funded, it's when we just have to build the program and make it available to folks. The goal is that next year, and, and fingers crossed, hopefully we can utilize all of that. There are times in other communities that have done that, where it takes a year or two before the full, it's basically first come, first served, and there are times that it doesn't get utilized. But I think it'll be one of those things that we can generate some excitement about, and if we, if we get some good projects and good visibility out there, it'll be good. So, that'll be spring before it's coming, but I just wanted to let people know that that's now in the works, now that we've got the budget approved. I think, oh, wait, wait, wait. So, the other thing I did want to comment on, just from a mayor's comment, is the airport incident. There is one letter that was received in the pack, that was received before the deadline this weekend, went in the packet. We've received a few more letters since then that will be, council has seen all of those as they've come in, or at least they've been into your inboxes, so you've had a chance to see that, and those will be included in the packet next time. I had a short paragraph that I was gonna say, but as was pointed out in some of the letters, I'm a pilot, and so there are those who will disregard anything I say from, from a perceived bias there. So what I think I'm gonna do is just read a couple paragraphs, it was actually written from one of our council members, in a response that I think sums it up pretty well. Currently, we are waiting for the FAA investigation to be completed before any judgments are made. The airport is a city-county airport, with the majority of the funding come from the county and not the city. We have a legal lease agreement in place that transfers the responsibility of running the airport to the airport board. Proper channels must be followed. At the end of the day, the FAA has the final authority over the Red Lodge Airport, with the airport board handling the day-to-day operations. Emotional responses, while understandable, especially after an incident, are not the basis for future policy. The facts from the investigation are what will matter. We currently have one-way protection zones in place exactly for this type of situation. My understanding is that two of these accidents happened in our own protection zone, which is why the city does not allow building in these zones. The third accident was very close to the runway protection zone. Unfortunately, not every accident will happen in a designated area. If the FAA rules were not followed in this situation, I am confident that the FAA will enforce a penalty. If the FAA determines the Red Lodge Airport was complicit in the accident, and corrective measures will be discussed and a plan of action will be put into place. So I, I think that basically kind of sums it up. At this point, I can't say that there is an FAA investigation going on. I can tell you, from, from the perspective of being a pilot and having watched these things, it's generally a couple of months before they issue a preliminary report, and sometimes up to a year before they have a final report, but the preliminary report is, my guess is, it'll have enough information for us to consider what changes need to be considered and move forward. And then, I meant from the last part too, I'm grateful that no one was hurt on the ground, and that the pilot and passengers were not seriously hurt. So, I, I thought that summarized that well.
But that was, that council person's opinion.
This, this was.
Not mine. I did not write that.
That, that is, that is, that is a fair, that is a fair statement. That is just, and, and it's a little longer than my response is, but, but, basically, yeah, the FAA and the NTSB come in and investigate these things. We don't issue drivers licenses, we don't take them away. So we will, we will wait, we will wait until the reports come in, and then decide what decisions we want to make moving forward from the city. So, that, I think, I'm glad I scrolled down, because I almost missed it. I think that's everything on, on my mayor's comments list. Is there anything else I was requested to do homework on? All right.
I was just gonna ask about the cart event on Thursday, nine eleven.
Oh, thank you. So Thursday, yeah, I knew there was another one I missed in there. Thursday is going to be a Parks Board meeting, an ad hoc parks meeting. They are meeting here at five thirty, when City Hall has no power, so it'll be outside. And that is going to be a tour, but there is limited seating there, but if there are more folks show up than we have seats, we'll just look to public to who has four or five seats and then go around. What they're gonna do is go around and visit all of the parks within the city. There's a lot of parks that people aren't necessarily aware of, including people in the Parks Board. So just give a visibility of where the parks are, so that they understand where they are, what the challenges are, what opportunities are maybe there that are not being capitalized on. So that will be Thursday at five thirty. Thank you very much.
Yes, I'm looking forward to it.
That was right there, just missed it. All right. If there's nothing else, I'll close my comments, and we will open it up for public comment. Again, this is the first of several opportunities, the public will have to comment. If you would direct, come up to the podium, this is the mic that'll be picking it up, and speak, state your name and, and where you live for, for the record, and then address your comments to, to the chair. You'll have three minutes, it's not a back and forth discussion, but you'll have three minutes, and, and we'll go from there. Again, for action items, there'll be public comment on every action item, and at the end of the meeting, there'll also be another public comment period. The only request is that you only comment once per public comment period. So if you want to comment at the first of the meeting, you can do that, and if you want to stick around to the end of the meeting and comment again, we'll let you do that as well. Okay? So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and open public comment, and I'm gonna start it out with those in the room who came in person. So if you'd like to address the council and be heard for three minutes, the podium is yours.
Not being bashful. I have written, provided copies for all of you. Good evening. My name is Christine Cogwell, and I live at six twenty nineteen Street West. On the morning of August thirty-first, during the Red Lodge Airport's rings and wheels fly in, an airplane crashed in my yard, thirty feet from my home. My family was nearly killed, and now my property is contaminated with unknown gallons of fuel and motor oil. This is not just a personal issue, it's a community safety issue. I want to directly address a point of misinformation raised at today's Public Health and Safety Meeting. The Red Lodge Airport is a public-use general aviation airport owned and operated by the City of Red Lodge and Carver County. It is not an FAA-certified airport. Therefore, the primary responsibility towards safety rests with this council, the city, and the airport board, not the FAA. The official NTSB investigation will not and cannot address the ongoing management and operational issues that fall under the city's jurisdiction. The city, through this council, has a duty to ensure that all public facilities, including this airport, are operated safely and responsibly for the well-being of the community, the entire community. My concerns are not just about this single accident, but about the pattern of negligence at the airport. These include multiple crashes along the west bench and residential areas in the last two years. An airport board composed solely of commissioners and pilots, which I believe is a conflict of interest, and inadvertently has elevated the airport above the safety of city residents. Direct conflicts with FAA recommendations, such as hangers being used for storage and residences on the property. The termination of the airport manager position, further elevating risks. The failure to establish a new inter-local agreement after the previous one was terminated over two years ago. The continued leasing of city land for private development with no revenue for the city, and no consideration of safety or quiet enjoyment of city residents. The hosting of airshows and the use of turf runways, including on the morning of the crash, despite the airport's close proximity to residential areas. These are just a few of the negligent practices the airport has demonstrated, resulting in a crash in my lawn. I'm asking council to place an immediate moratorium on airport activity outside of official flights with professional pilots and the Red Lodge Flying Club, as they typically follow standard aviation safety practices until these issues are fully addressed. You have a fundamental responsibility to address this, not the FAA nor the state. The airport board's failure to act and the absence of independent oversight make it your duty to protect the community. And I thank you for your service, and I thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Anyone else in the chambers who would like to speak? Seeing none in the chambers, let me go to online. If you're online and would like to speak, you can either turn on your camera to indicate, or if I see a mute come off or a raised hand, that will indicate that there's somebody online who would like to speak. Going once, looking in the room and online. Going twice. Three times, we'll go ahead and close that particular version of the public comment and bring it back to the table. Thank you. As we move into the action portion of our agenda.
Don't we get to say anything?
Oh.
If not, that's okay, I just wondered.
I will exercise my discretion if council would like to say, what I, what I don't want to do is have a back and forth, so like I said, well, but if you would like to add any comments, I welcome those at this time.
I'll make them short. I had a tour today of the airport, and we, I walked around it for about an hour, and I was, my eyes were awakened to a problem. And I think we should go further and get a commission or something to talk about the airport. I didn't know that there were turf strips that have been built in recent years, and all three of these crashes have been directly from these turf strips that are on the east side of the airport. And there's a dog leg, dog leg ripe, which is, seems unsafe to me. I don't know, I'm not a pilot, but there's just some things, everyone in town probably thinks the only thing about the airport is thirty-four and sixteen, or thirty-four and fourteen, which is the asphalt, but there's other cross strips, and there's only one emergency cross strip, I know that my lingo is not correct, but now there's two other cross strips that were built in the last few years. And the other day, I was driving to the dog park, had my blinker on, going left, and this horrific noise came over me. I, I turned into the other lane, doesn't make sense, but that's what I did. But it was an airplane going over me, and they call that the graveyard route, duh. But it goes toward the graveyard, and that turf, that strip was built in the last, both of those were built with no professional aspects to it. I think we should reinstate Jeff Wise, if he's willing to do it, as the general manager, and I think we all have, we have to have a special committee to, because there is a Wild West show, that's not being. West show, that's not being overseen by anyone. Plus, on this interlocal agreement two years ago, it's been stayed four times, if not in, if not in use. It was, it was, it was signed on April thirteenth, August thirteenth to twenty-three, it was stayed, ah, February twenty-four, May twenty-four, eight twenty-four. It has been amended four times, and there is so, there is no really interlocal agreement. I'm disappointed, I'm shocked, and I think we need to take this under our wing, and I'm embarrassed that I didn't know anything about the airport. I just thought it was undertaken, being taken care of, if not.
Okay. Any other comments from the table? I will take it under advisement, and I think what we will do is we will have some outside folks come in and address it, because what I can tell you, having an awareness of there is that there's a lot of inaccurate information that gets stated as factual, and I don't fault the people who make those comments, including yourself. And I said I won't argue with here because that's not our purpose here, but I noted, and I think let's go ahead and make sure we get some information in.
And all three of those crashes involve those old yellow planes, which is very interesting to me. I'd like to talk about that too at a commission, I mean, a special assignment meeting.
I think that's an appropriate course of action. Councilmember Tupin, it looks like you're trumping at the bit.
I mean, not chomping, but I am hungry, but specifically, I do feel that there should be follow-up on this. As Ann said, I don't know anything about the airport, as I am also not a pilot. I have read through a lot of documents, I have had, different people tell me all sorts of different things, and I have a really hard time grasping on what's real, what's not real. I think specifically, I would like a report, if possible, from the Airport Board about the incident, what currently is taking place, as well as repercussions, and what their course of action is. One thing that I did request when we were speaking about the interlocal agreement about two years ago, was some form of information that's accessible for the public for what rules are. It doesn't necessarily have to be the whole FAA guidelines, because I understand that's insane, but some sort of understanding of what the rules are, because again, as you just said, there is a lot of misinformation, and I think that if there's digestible information that might make it easier for, one, us to understand, as well as the public, and then also make it easier to explain to the public, well, this is the protocol, this is the process, this is what you should expect, something outside of this, this is how you can handle it, report it, this is who deals with it, because I'm not trying to pass the buck, but I do want the buck to be managed by a bank, not me.
Is council all right with that request? If I accept that as a request from the full council?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right.
So, I just have a quick question for Ann. We've always had two grass, cross runways up there since the airport was built. Are you saying-
Hold on, what I don't want to do is have this be a discussion, because then it turns into an argument.
I just wanted a point of clarification.
Yeah, and what I don't want, because we could do that for this entire meeting, and I think what we can do instead is we can have folks show up and say, here's the history, here's what the airport looked like in the original.
I would love for you to take a tour up there.
Oh, I've been, I've been up there.
Historically, the original airstrip was the crosswind.
Cross, yes.
Yeah, that's fine. It's not for public use, it's for emergencies. Now, there's two more, one going across seventy-eight and one going north-south towards where the plane that crashed on Sunday was on that strip. And they don't have numbers, the asphalt one is thirty-four, fourteen, or sixteen. But I would recommend going up there and looking at the grass strips that were put in the last ten years, and I didn't know they existed. And I don't know if anyone knows they existed, I mean, just normal, like day-to-day people.
We did when we had the maps and stuff of them, and we went over them, like two years ago, they were on the map.
Well, there's no room for error on that one, as we found out Sunday.
So, all right, so I will work on putting together a report that we can come in and even possibly include a tour, so.
I would love that, for y'all to do that. I found it very interesting.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion from council before we move to the action portion of the agenda? All right. I will, actually, this one, let me give an introduction before we do an action, because then I can ask for an action on that.
I have an excerpt, but-
We received one request to our notification of an opening on the planning board. That was from Perry Roberts. I have had an opportunity to speak with Perry Roberts, and I feel comfortable appointing him to the planning board, and would ask this council to confirm my choice of selecting, this is a mayoral decision with consent of council, so I would request council's consent in approving Perry Roberts to the planning board.
I would move to approve.
And he is not here, he had some personal things to deal with today, so he was not able to make it today.
I would move to approve Perry Roberts as an appointment, a mayoral appointment to the planning board.
I have a motion from Councilmember Conley, and a second from Councilmember Tupin. Any discussion at the table?
I don't know him.
And that's weird.
My guess is that you probably have, you will recognize him, because he has been to planning board meetings. He is also currently a member of the Urban Renewal Board, and has been involved with Brian in our planning department a fair amount, so he has some familiarity with our regulations and stuff already. He does recognize and acknowledge that there's a whole lot of homework to be done, but as I talked to him, I did not, did not get a sense that there was any counter-community objectives or agendas at play. So, I said I feel comfortable, not anything, and so, and I had the motion from, it was Councilmember Conley, and the second from Councilmember Tupin. Discussion at the table.
I'm going to feel really bad when I do recognize, because we met a few times.
You'll recognize me.
Don't, I have the same problem. Hearing no further discussion at the table, on this is a mayoral appointment, I will bypass public comment and get a vote, please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yeah.
Six oh, the motion passes. I will entertain a motion for ordinance nine seven three, and we just ask whoever makes that motion remembered as a second reading.
I move to approve ordinance number nine seven three, an ordinance of the City of Red Lodge, Montana, to update section four point one point one six, solid waste of the Public Health and Safety Red Lodge City Municipal Code, second reading.
Have a motion from Councilmember Conley, a second from Councilmember Tupin, we're going to give this one to. Discussion at the table, and then we will, and if somebody would like to include with that just an overview of it before we go to public comment, that would be helpful.
Well, Sandy, the line share, and I thank you again, Sandy, for your yeoman's work on this. We've been it a long time. Thank you.
And I have so many, so many versions of it, I've gotten to the point, I don't know what they are. I mean, basically, what we were trying to do is, under section A, A under one, is instead of tight latching, we went with tight fitting, we went with tight latching, we felt that was stronger, that solid waste should be stored in metal or plastic containers having tight latching covers. We also put in that all commercial industrial apartment operator shall provide solid waste handling, that we added, that is adequate, an adequate size for that business. We thought that that was important, so we don't want businesses to get cheap out on their trash and then it overflows.
Cheap.
It overflows, yes. We did add all attractant waste, broadly defined as any discarded material that could reasonably be expected to attract wildlife, such as bears, rodents, and such insects. Food packaging shall be stored in a bear-resistant container. We did put in, in parentheses, one bag of non-attractant. Yard waste may be placed outside the container. We included a new one, container shall not be overfilled to prevent closing securely. Another new one, container locking mechanism shall not be purposely disabled, since we found that that is happening. We did remove, and then I have a note that we were going to put it back in G, so that was garbage from other premises, no garbage shall be deposited in any receptible, except garbage originating upon the premises upon which the, without the permission of the affiliated property. So, in other words, you can't just drive up and use somebody else's trash can unless they said that's okay. We added, construction sites shall have a bear-resistant container for attractant waste. If a construction dumpster is not bear-resistant, a separate bear-resistant container shall be available for attractant waste. Basically, when the workers bring their lunch and throw it in a big dumpster, it now becomes attractant, so they would have to have a special waste container for that. We also added, all waste must be secured in a way that prevents it from blowing and becoming litter. We added, construction dumpsters shall be covered and secured when unattended, and we added the fine in here, as a violation shall result in a fine of a hundred dollars for each offense and each subsequent offense. Each day that a violation occurs or is permitted to exist constitutes a separate offense. So, we're hoping that these changes will help alleviate some of the bear attractants in the city.
Any other discussion at the table before we open up for public comment?
Can I make a motion to amend?
You, you, you-
I have the language ready.
Can we hold off until after public comment, bring it back? And then, and that'll start it over and make it a first reading again, we can do that, but that's okay. Process is process, so that's all right. But let's go to a public comment first and then have a discussion.
We can vote it down, that's fine.
But there's not even a motion yet, so. Let's go to public comment and then talk about it. All right. With that, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. This is specifically a public hearing for ordinance nine seven three, solid waste, if you would limit your comments to that. Public hearing is open. I'll start with those in the room. Seeing no one leaping towards the stand, let's go to online. If I, I'm looking for cameras, raised hands, or mics. Going twice. Actually, going once, I got to go once before I can go twice. Go twice.
You can go back.
Three times, seeing no action, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on nine seven three, and I will start with Councilmember Tupin, who has something she thinks she would like to discuss about whether we want to add or not.
I'm just going to put this on record, and I know that we had mentioned it before, I do not think we need to make a motion to amend, because it's mostly me getting into semantics, but under the whereas is, the people of Red Lodge coexist with wildlife and wish no harm to come to them.
Oh, yeah.
Again, we had-
We talked about taking that out.
We had talked about taking that out, and I'm just going to put it on Chelsea's record that-
I'll put it on Chelsea's-
I just want it to be on record that I don't necessarily believe that everyone wishes no harm to the wildlife.
Right, I don't, absolutely. A hundred percent agree with you on that.
And if I could rewrite this, but I don't necessarily feel we need to. I think that this is fine, as is, I would like to think no one wishes harm on animals, I would just say, whereas the people of Red Lodge coexist with wildlife and must reasonably adjust disposal practices to do so. That's, but I don't-
Are you sure you wouldn't care to make a motion and have a discussion on it?
I mean, we can have a discussion here, but that's what it's doing, right? Do you guys want to talk about this more?
I don't.
Nope, you do.
I, I, I-
Was that you, Ann?
Yes, it was.
I'm with you.
There's two in working.
I think the majority of the people of Red Lodge don't wish any harm to come to wildlife.
You don't know the people, I know.
Wild turkeys are attacked.
Oh, no. The President literally shot a bear on white, what was that, a year ago? So, that's, yeah, a year ago.
But you didn't want to harm it.
He did, though.
No, he was trying to scare it away. He was trying to haze it out of his yard. And the turkey with the arrow to its neck, too, Mademoiselle.
Yeah, I remember that.
I think formally, if we want to discuss this, you should make a motion, and then if it, and if it goes down.
Well, I think we're discussing the whereas is right now.
Okay.
We're not talking about an amendment, we're just talking about Chelsea's opinions.
Okay. And it is a whereas, not an action.
Chelsea, I a hundred percent agree with you, and I would like to see it changed.
Okay.
I have, there's a comment on the numbering, which might fall into this, but-
Oh, there you are.
Okay.
As it say, one, under now therefore, being enacted, and one, and then it goes to three.
Good catch.
On fine, so I didn't know if we are changing, if that matters, if it's part of the-
There are two crossed out.
Have it- We did, and the attorney made some changes.
All right, so then we have to change it.
But if we're making changes anyway, then if we need to incorporate them together.
And it just means it'll be final when we have our next public meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Continue to attract bears.
Is there discussion at the table, including a possible amendment?
I will make a motion to amend.
Is there amendment?
Ordinance number nine seven three, to read, please strike, whereas the people of Red Lodge coexist with wildlife and wish no harm to them, and please now read, whereas the people of Red Lodge coexist with wildlife and must reasonably adjust disposal practices to do so, and then also changing the number three back to the number two under effective date.
A second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tupin, a second from Councilmember Ronnie. Discussion at the table.
And if a member from the public had to comment, is it-
Then miss that opportunity for now.
Maybe it's the end.
No worries.
Thank you. No other comment.
We can amend it again, next.
Thank you for making that, I didn't notice, I'm just running the meeting.
Thank you.
Is there something that needs to change?
No, it's like, sorry.
Let me keep it at the table. Watch how clever I am, let's keep this at the table. Is there discussion on the amendment?
No.
All right. All right, so we have an amendment to replace that whereas, and then change the number. Whereas, we have a motion on the table, I'm going to take the opportunity to go for public comment, if there's any public comment on the-
You were kidding to it.
Public comment is open at this time.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
If I see like a deer at the park, the other day I did see with a, like a, what is it, firewood bundle rolled around in the ground. Who would I, it wasn't tight, though, it was like a really loose one, who would I call in that situation?
When it all called dispatch.
Dispatch?
Yep, and they will direct it to the correct source.
Nine, don't call nine-one-one, but, yeah. One, two, three, four, 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 six, one, two, three, four. The non-emergent number.
I'm like, I want to help them, but it's like, like-
No, you don't.
Any further comment from the audience directly tied to ordinance nine seven three?
Sorry.
Going once, twice, seeing nothing online, I'm going to go ahead and call that three times and bring it back to the table. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Do I do online?
Did you do online?
I did do online.
Oh, okay, in which order. Oh, it was quick. Okay. Okay.
Councilmember Daniel, did you have a comment?
No, I, nope, I think, nope.
All right. Seeing no further comment at the table, could I get a vote on the amendment?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
The amendment passes six zero, which means, now we are now voting on ordinance nine seven three, this will now be first reading. Any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none, can I get a roll call on the original motion?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
Six oh, so the first reading of the now amended motion passes, and we will have that on the agenda again in a couple of weeks. I was worried we wouldn't have anything for the agenda, so we're good.
We'll, we'll probably have something.
I will entertain a motion for ordinance nine fifty-two.
I move to approve ordinance number nine fifty-two, second amended, an ordinance replacing chapter four of title two of the Red Lodge Municipal Code, administrative ordinances governing the collection and reporting of resort tax revenue.
I second. For, oh, first reading, sorry, first reading.
I have a motion from Councilmember Ronnie, a second from Councilmember Conley. Discussion at the table before we go to public comment. Discussion at the table before we go to public comment.
Um, we tried to incorporate all of the changes we discussed at the last meeting and at Admin and Finance. Um, hopefully, we did get them all in there, do you want me to go through those right now?
Your call.
Okay. Oh, there's a lot of them, (laugh) so.
I don't know that you need to go detail by detail, if you just wanna summarize them, that would be lovely.
Well, we just basically, um, the Resort Tax Committee has met multiple times going through this. They, uh, had recommendations to, um, clarify some things, um, and we had some changes in here at the city staff's request. Um, basically to clarify some things that, um, there were questions or we'd made, um, decisions on, um, that they were asked, the city, the mayor was asked to decide if it was taxed or not. Um, like, for example, we did exempt from tax educational materials now, so, um, you know, like, science-
Projects.
Projects, kits, things like that. Some of it, we were just updating things, um, and we added novelty magnets with stickers, we added postcards. Um, we took out clothing under, instead of new clothing items, it's just new items that have been either screen printed, embroidered, or otherwise imprinted with designs depicting Montana Red Lodge, because people will get shot glasses now, or they'll get cups, or they'll, you know, it's not just clothing that has things imprinted on it. So, it's just a lot of more clarification, cleaning things up. Um, anyone else at the, from Admin and Finance that would like to weigh in on important things that we added? We did add so that if it's a first offense, this is a big one for council, if it's a first offense, um, and they've been up to date on their reporting and their resort tax payments, um, up to this point, um, the mayor, um, may waive that penalty, the initial two hundred and fifty dollar penalty, so that they don't immediately have to go to council. So, that was kind of a big one, and that was kind of at our request, so that every penalty doesn't automatically go to council.
I think that we also did, um, under bonding and collection be, uh, the temporary vendors, the deposits must be in the form of cash payment instead of like a check.
Yes.
Uh, so that was added in.
Or they could do a bond, yeah.
Or they could do a bond, something that is really real. And we also talked about, uh, a business hosting an event would, can wish to create an umbrella over the participating vendors. There, thereby creating whoever the business hosting the event is now responsible for the resort tax.
Yes, and resorting.
So, not every single participating event has to have their own. So, those were kind of important.
And, and for the public, notice, all of the changes, whether they're additions or strikes, are highlighted in yellow when you look at the packet online.
I think we also put in there that, uh, the, the audit has to be completed, uh, conducted by the city or the designated representative, as opposed to the business. The business itself.
Yes, doing their own audit, that was the big one, yeah.
I think we changed, um, appeals, that we did calendar days, as opposed to days. It was kind of, well, I think we had a business day.
I don't think we had any days, it was days, and that was-
Very ambiguous.
Yep, yeah, it, it was, it was too, too wishy washy. I think those are the things that I thought were-
Important changes?
Except that all fees and penalties collected now go into the general fund.
Yes, instead of back into the resort tax. And that's to pay for city staff, the extra time that they have to put into going after-
Administering.
Yeah, for late fees and penalties, the letters they have to send out, and their time in doing that.
Any other discussion at the table before we go to public comment?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Davis, call.
Yeah, I'm just so grateful for this document, I think it's a huge help when I look at the chamber. It's such a great resource, because when you first move here for businesses or just community members, they wanna know where the dollars go, and they wanna know, um, how it's coded, and what's included, and what's not included. So, it's just a great resource for anybody relocating to this area, and the locals who have questions, it's just all in this list. So, thank you for making it available, and for your work on it.
Thank you for thanking me.
All right, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and go to public comment. This is, again, public comment specifically related to ordinance number nine fifty two. If you'd like to, as, address council, please come up, state your name, you'll have three minutes. And, uh, I'm gonna look first to the chambers. Seeing no activity in chambers, I'm looking to online, looking for cameras to turn on, hands to be raised, or microphones to come off mute. I'm not seeing any, going once, twice, three times, we'll go ahead and close the public comment on ordinance nine fifty two and bring it back to the table. Discussion at the table, please.
Got nothing.
Hearing no further discussion, can I get a vote, please?
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniel?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Cupin?
Yes.
Six oh, the motion passes. I will entertain a motion for resolution three seven one five.
I will make a motion to approve resolution number thirty seven one five, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Red Lodge, Montana, to have typed the name of L. E. Johnson Row within the city limits of Red Lodge.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tupin, a second from Councilmember Daniels. Discussion at the table. By the way, what I'm handing out, and for the public's purposes, this is input-
Oh, I see.
-that we received from one of the folks impacted, um, it did come in after the, the, um, it did come in after the, the deadlines and the packets went out. However, even if that had come in the packet, I would not have included all of it, because it has private information on it and documents. And while that's important for the discussion, I don't want that to necessarily be part of the, the public record. Um, I can go ahead and speak to this, I guess, to introduce it. So, this is one of two we have, interesting, this is the second one that came to us. What happened is, this came to us because a title company reached out, there's a new property that's changing hands or being built or sold, and, uh, they were having difficulty, because they could not find out that L. E. Johnson Row existed anywhere. What happened is, in, in years past, this was done, uh, by just the planning director saying it is so. Unfortunately, that is not the process, and because it wasn't in the process, there are also lots of places that didn't reflect it. So, what we're doing now is just coming back and correcting it. I kinda got, I got a fun phone call on Sunday morning, um, from, from, uh, a couple of different people. There were, there's actually two homes over on it right now, and they had responded. You will notice in the resolution that it says that, per the ordinance, we notified everybody via mail, and we have received no responses back saying there was a problem. I did get a phone call Sunday, saying, no, you absolutely cannot change it away from L. E. Johnson Row, because that's what it says on our title, and our insurance, and our driver's license, and everything else. And I said, hold on, you're not reading that correctly. What we're doing is actually making it L. E. Johnson Row, because that really doesn't exist. And they said, oh, never mind, please proceed, thank you, thank you very much for doing this. So, it was, it was the kind of phone call that I really kind of like having, to say, oh, we, we are fixing the problem in exactly the way you are prescribing. So, so that is that, and I know in the last discussion, we'd had, uh, some conversations about whether L. period, E. period, and, and those of us who went home and did our history lessons afterwards, and came back, we found out that his name wasn't even Johnson, it was Johnston, and then they changed it, and did he really eat livers, or did he not? It was a great history lesson, um-
He left.
But, but, uh-
I called the Indian, I got it. He said yes, he had that.
We're, we're having, there's, there's a lot of discussion about who had the better PR person. But, the question at issue, and what the resolution does, is to, uh, assign the name, which is in use by some properties on there, but not all of them, and, and to make it an official designation of L. E. Johnson Row. So, discussion at the table before we go to public comment.
I think you covered it.
I think, I see this as cleaning up something that should have been done six years ago.
One thing that we did discuss is, um, we do like the idea of some sort of historical placard. It was, we're not quite sure what context it's gonna have at this point.
That was Angie.
Yeah, that was Angie, thank you for that, Angie, we did have conversation about that. Uh, and maybe just across the board, not necessarily having it at every single block, but doing some sort of documentation, whether that's through the chamber, or a fun side project, where talking about the historical significance of different rows and different streets.
My, my only request, and, and we did talk about that meeting, 'cause it turned into where does it end? My only request is, I will just put it out there publicly, that if anybody doesn't do that, it does need to go through the city. Without that, what will happen is, we'll have people putting up their own signs. We'll have people putting up the L. E. Johnston sign, and then people tearing it down and replacing it with the Johnson that said he did eat it, and somebody, you know. So, what we will do is, if we're gonna go that route, that'll be a separate action from here. That'll be a separate action from here, and please coordinate those signs. It is, it is a, I'm not sure if it's a misdemeanor or, uh, or more important, but don't, don't put signs up where you ought not be putting signs up, that's a city responsibility.
Neither do I.
It's kinda, it's interesting, there, there's already a big plaque and, uh, and an abode down at the city, down at, uh, Chamber of Commerce.
Right, yeah.
And they, you know, I just think the easiest way is-
There.
Is to leave it alone.
So, the, the, the discussion at, the, the action at the table tonight is the ascending of the name L. E. Any discussion at the table before we go to public comment? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open public comment. Going first to the chambers.
He is new in town, he probably know what we're talking about.
Seeing, seeing, seeing no one jumping to the podium internally, I'll look for online. Again, I'm looking for cameras, raised hands, or microphones coming off mute to indicate someone would like to speak. This is me stalling and talking and stretching to give people that opportunity. Seeing none, we will call that first, going once, going twice, and three times, we'll close that and bring it back to the table. Any further discussion before we take action on resolution three seven one five? I'm gonna say, any further discussion related to the action at hand?
Oh.
No, no.
Hearing none, can I get a roll call, please?
Ronnie?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth? With my apologies to Liver Eaten Johnson, I will vote yes. Cupin?
Yes. Six oh, the motion passes. I will entertain a mo-
What else would I do?
I will entertain a motion for three seven one six.
Uh, I will make a motion for three seven one six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Red Lodge, Montana, to rename Alpine Way to Rocky Mountain Way within the city limits of Red Lodge.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Councilmember Tupin, a second from Councilmember Daniels. I will take the opportunity to introduce this as well. This is one that started with us, uh, with some folks that were involved, everybody was on board. Um, uh, I will say that we hadn't yet done the letters and, and discovered that, and I was actually working with secondhand information being provided to us from a Realtor. Yes, 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 yes. Um, then one person was unable to close their house, and, and so they said, never mind, let's not do that, but then everybody else still wanted it, yes. The short version is, that person then came back and said, no, I'm finding out this is a real problem, even though it'll be a little bit of a pain, please move forward. So, we sent out the letters. I have, I have not talked to these individuals directly, but again, I have secondhand information from their representative. But we did send out the letters, and we have seen no responses back. There's basically two landowners, one that has a home, and one that has a bunch of lots that will become homes.
This won't be problematic with John Denver, there's no, like, patent rights or anything like that, or copyrights.
Good question, though.
That was Rocky Mountain High, we might have had a problem with Rocky Mountain High.
Ah, oh, no, yeah, um, oh, I can't communicate now. I have a song stuck in my head now.
All right, we'll interfere with the voting.
No.
All right. Any discussion at the table before we go to public hearing?
Good.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing related to resolution three seven one six, Al- Alpine Way becoming Rocky Mountain Way. Seeing no discussion in the chamber, I'll go to online. I'm not seeing any activity going once, twice, three times, we will go ahead and close the, the, uh, public hearing and bring it back to the table. Any further discussion related to the item at hand?
Joe Walsh.
Yep, it took a second, it took me a second.
That's, that is all.
Let the record show.
Crazy stereo, wow. What is in your watch?
All right, hearing no discussion at the table, can I get a vote, please?
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniel?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Cupin?
Yes.
Six oh, the motion passes. That completes the action portion of our menu, and what we do now is we move into the work session. This is where council, if you notice how everything, let's pretend everything went really, really smoothly. The reason things go really smoothly is because council gets a chance to talk about them in advance.
Apparently we failed.
Pardon?
We failed.
Mentioned what it would have been if we hadn't had it all worked out in advance.
Exactly, yes.
All right, so with that, let me first turn to, um, Committee Chair Conley for an update regarding public health and safety issues.
Uh, Chief Schrock told us today, between August first and August thirty, there were three hundred and sixty-eight calls for service, a hundred and sixty-seven traffic stops, with only thirty-five citations. Uh, update on, we haven't got a real update on the, uh, school resource officer. Um, I did suggest that we're going to need a really good, uh, public relations, uh, with the community, if in fact, we can get the funding for an SRO, and we were fine with that. Uh, we did look again at the solid waste ordinance, uh, nine seven three, and we thought it looked lovely. And, yeah, we, we did. And, uh, then we, we had public this morning, and the things discussed is that we yet again discussed the problem on Fith and Hauser, with no real solve, except that there's gonna be a V-PAN in there, and maybe that will slow people down, and that's just, uh, what I understand, kind of a gutter for water. Um, the other thing that we did have, a representative from, uh, the Boys and Girls Club, and a representative from, uh, the Children's Center attend, and, uh, discussed the, the problems in that block. Um, because we did discuss perhaps closing down that street, uh, to, through traffic, which just moved the traffic into the residential areas, which might not have been the best concept. Um, Boys and Girls Club do have a camera, and said that his little guy, you know, that stands out there that's supposed to slow people down, has been run over at least ten times, at least.
And thrown, and people just say to come care about it, 'cause it's not like, sorry, can I speak? Oh, sorry.
As you may, as you may have guessed.
Yeah, um, sorry, my name's Grant, I'm the Boys and Girls Club Director, and that little guy has been run over, thrown, um, just kicked in the gutter, and it's, it's not really doing what we, we want it to do, because if that was a kid, or one of my staff, or myself, which I've al- I've almost been hit by a speeding car, by staff, uh, um, kids usually, sometimes, we try our best, but once in a while, that kid will run across the street, and somebody who's going thirty-five, forty, which I've seen personally, that's not gonna be good for any of us. And I do not wanna make that call, I don't, my staff definitely, I'll probably make that call, but first we did, but I don't want anybody to get hurt, so I have some ideas that I can propose to the council, if you guys-
Probably not now, let's do it at the public comment.
And, and I would, yeah, you need to turn it to public comment, and, and ideally, that's something you would take through that public health and safety standing committee meeting first. That would be the appropriate place to introduce that.
Yeah, anyway, Chief Schrock is, is aware of it, and, uh, was concerned, and asked that if, if they could move their cameras so that you could actually spot a car or a license plate.
I, I will just go on record as saying that I, after having my children there many years, and now they're all grown, I, I always felt that that street should be just closed during the daytime hours. You know, not, not necessarily all the time, but, um, yeah, it's-
And, and there wasn't-
There's, there's just way too many kids crossing the street between the skate park, the, um, Children's Center, the Boys and Girls Club, and the park.
Right.
But, that's just my personal opinion.
And, and so that was, that was kind of our, our gist of it, too, is that perhaps even a time limit. In other words, if the kids are getting there at eight in the morning, from eight to ten, or, you know, perhaps that. But the committee's gonna go ahead and look into it, and we hope that, uh, that we, we can go ahead. But that is a problem area, so we're, we're looking at that. And then, you might be surprised, but we did have a contingent of, uh, concerned citizens about the plane crash, and having the airport, um, in the proximity of homes, or homes in the proximity of the airport type of thing. And, uh, Kristen Cogwell pretty well summed it up, but I, I thought, uh, that it went fairly well. It went fairly well, that we, we listened to all the concerns, as you might imagine, there were concerns. So, um, that was it. That was our entire meeting.
All right, any, any questions for public health and safety?
I just, uh, Sandy, does Grant need to tell you he wants to be on the agenda in two weeks?
No, I'm gonna go ahead and put him on there. It's always eight o'clock.
Alright.
The second and fourth Tuesdays.
Bringing conversation back to the table and admin and finance, I will look to Committee Chair Ronnie.
Okay, well, first let's just, um, we didn't talk about this this morning 'cause I didn't have it on the agenda. But, um, in your packet, there's a re- resolution canceling the twenty twenty-five general election for the City of Red Lodge to fill the mayor and four council positions. Um, by doing so, this will save us approximately, what is it, five thousand dollars?
I guess probably closer to four.
Four, okay. I like five better, but we'll go with four. Um, but basically we are all running unopposed and it's too late for anyone to, um, sign up to be a write-in. So we don't have to have an election.
We can either spend four thousand dollars that says pick one of one or we can save that four thousand dollars and, and appropriate it elsewhere.
And so I guess we would like your input on this before we put it up for action next time.
It's interesting that Chris, uh, Crystal's letter says you have not met the requirements for an election. But I mean, we still have to do a resolution, but it's interesting that we haven't even since we're all unopposed, we haven't met the requirements for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've nothing about on that.
Yeah, so I thought that was interesting, so yes, just fill the tab it.
Councilmember Davis?
Oh, um, so that four K is that allocated funds or whatever for elections?
We, 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 yeah, we send in the budget and use it until, we all, it'll just be available to use elsewhere.
It's out of the general fund. Where? Okay, it's out of the general fund. Thank you. Okay, that's on the line. And thank you.
No, I'm all for it.
Oh, okay.
Ronnie, did you wanna add anything or are we good?
No, other than the, they need it by the end of September.
That was gonna be my question, when do they need this for?
If we don't give this by the end of ne- if we don't do this at the next meeting, then we write them a check for four thousand dollars to send out a ballot with. And we don't get to hear any rumors about, the power mongers we are, how we canceled the election.
And we can't do it tonight?
No, because it's not up for action.
We, we, we cannot do it tonight. We could've put it on there, but because they said they didn't need it until the end of September, I wanted to stick with our, we, we always give it public notice and talk about it as a group. Otherwise it would've had little asterisks on it.
So if everyone's good?
Yep.
We'll move that forward.
Yeah. And then, um, we, we really didn't have a lot else to go over. We spent most of our meeting going over our, uh, priorities, projects and timelines to move forward. So some things that we will finally be putting to bed that we've started a long time ago was, um, our business registration ordinance, um, the, the corrections and tweaks and stuff like that that we were doing to that. Um, Ronnie will have, um, probably at our next meeting, a resolution for budget amendments for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-five budget. So just per year-end fiscal amendment for that.
I have a question, Ronnie. Is that something that can be for discussion next time or do we need to have it above the fold for timing? And so what that is, is all of our budgets, they're bound on a per-budget basis, not on a line item basis. So if things go around, however, if there's a new line item that didn't exist, we spent money, then what we do is we do a budget amendment before we close it out. Basically, it's council saying, yes, you can spend that money in this location. And it's stuff that we've already done, but we wait till the end of the year and kind of do them all as a catch-all.
Okay, thank you. And then two other things, um, as everyone knows, our public safety is basically, um, taking up more and more of our general fund and, uh, admin and finance has decided to tackle, um, ways to help alleviate some of that strain on our general fund. Um, including possibility of annexing Red Lodge into the Red Lodge Rural Fire District. Um, and we will be coming up with an action plan of what that would look like moving forward. And of course, it would have to be number one, a resolution, um, from City Council that they would support us moving forward with that. After we've kind of fleshed out the action plan, we do a presentation to you all showing you what that'd look like. And then, um, before we could actually move forward with that, the council would vote on that through resolution, giving us their support on that, if that's what, the way they want to do it. Um, the other thing would be like a public safety district, um, or putting something forward to the voters to increase our mils collected for public safety. So those are kind of our three choices, um, that we're going to be looking at. And then, um, probably in October, um, we are hoping to get the information on our short-term rentals, um, from today, the number of, um, residence, um, units, residential units we have in Red Lodge versus the number of short-term rentals we have in Red Lodge. We do this every September, October so that we can kind of keep an eye on, um, where we're at with the, the threshold or cap that we have in place of twenty percent. So that's, those are the wonderful things. Did I miss anything?
Thank you. That was so early this morning.
Alright, um, land use and planning. Into that I'll look to, uh, Committee Chair Tupin to update us.
Uh, still working on use of city-owned lands. Had a, a lovely conversation with our Parks Board President today about what they've been doing in terms of same exact concepts. So across the board, we're just gonna keep chugging along on that project.
Could you make a note to add just the Brewery Hill discussion to, to your agenda unless we can start vetting out the ideas there? It's not an emergency thing, but let's make sure we don't, we don't lose it from there. Alright, any other questions for Committee Chair Tupin? Alright, lastly, um, we'll look to Committee Chair Ronnie for Public Works.
Yes, so, um, David always has covered all the wonderful highlights from, uh, Mike's report, from our Public Works Director's report. But some things that we will be working on in the future, um, we are gonna review ordinance nine three nine, which is, um, Hans talks about our telegraph and, um, possibly adding in there our Noxious Sweats, getting a Noxious Sweats, um, program in place for within the city. Um, Anne has volunteered to kind of spearhead some of that research, so thank you, Anne. And then, um, we also have to, um, they talked about the Sidewalk fifty-fifty program. Um, Public Works Committee will be working with, um, Mike on, um, how that's gonna look. Um, you know, 'cause council will have to approve that program. Um, and we will probably use, since they had it where he came from in Shoto, we'll probably not reinvent the wheel and, um, take a lot of things from their program since it worked. Did I miss anything?
There's, there's actually a couple of different cities that have that, so he's, he's providing information from a couple of different programs that we can look at. And again, that has the target of by spring, you know, kind of next year so that people can be going with that, so. Alright, and we've got, with, but we've, we've gotten a lot of good stuff done over the last year. Um, I will work with, uh, Committee Chair Conley on, on getting, uh, an airport presentation. Like I said, I've got a, that's obviously a, a touchy issue. I need to make sure that we, we handle properly and appropriately, um, to do that. Because I'd like to get the, the, I'd like to get information from, from unbiased reputable sources that people will accept input from, um, to that. Uh, we do have, um, the, the, the interlocal agreement. I'll, I'll just touch on that just for a moment. Um, that is on the agenda to, to be coming up and getting done rather quickly. Um, we actually do have one in place because the interlocal, as it reads, is that until it is completed, which is basically a disposition of assets, the existing one is still there. And so all of the parties that are involved with that are in agreement in that. And, and anyone else who would challenge that basically doesn't have standing to challenge that. Having said that, we do want to address it. It's not been the hottest thing on our list and, and quite frankly, there's been a lot of things that have come up over the last year that we need to figure out how to work that in. Things like the carnival or, or, you know, some of this, uh, where are the boundaries, where are the, what are the controls that are there? Um, I actually have had already, prior to all of this excitement, um, a meeting set up with Angela who is the County Admin Officer, um, toward the end of this month that we're sitting down and going through that. So that's, independent of this, I think it'll, it'll obviously work into this conversation as well. Um, but that's something that, um, Council President, uh, Ronnie has, has specifically reached out and said, would you please wrap this up before the end of the year? So we're, we're trying to do that.
And, and, I mean, I, I realize that a lot of you were not on council when we went through this. Um, but it was awful and it was horrible. And I have a little PTSD from, from that. Um, and so I'm looking forward to, um, resolving this quickly and efficiently and hopefully leave as much of the emotion out of it as possible and rely on the facts of the situation, you know, and, and the history of the airport and what, what's been up there. Um, we had some great presentations about three years ago from, you know, the, the Airport Board, um, at that time, who are the city representatives, Beau, um, Ewald and Steve Smith at that time, who were appointed by our prior mayor to the Airport Board. And, um, they do have a lot of expertise and they know the history of the airport and how the runways have been utilized in the past and, um, and then the whole section, um, for the public safety where the staging for the, the helicopters and the training and the, you know, the fire and all of, you know, the asset that the airport is, you know, and how it needs to be used. And I'm not saying that things can't be tightened up there, you know, and, and some guidelines put in place. But I think we do need to spell out, I agree with Chelsea, on, on who's responsible for what, you know, because right now it is the Airport Board that is responsible for that through that interlocal agreement, so.
I think that we, we have an issue with public safety at the airport as well as the management of the airport. And those are two separate things and I, uh, this morning they were kind of getting all jumbled together. Where there's two separate issues and so we wanna make sure that we keep them separate. And, um, and go ahead and, and I know this morning, uh, we did get some handouts. I hope that, uh, Anne and Patty had a chance to read through those, um, which is a little bit of the history. It wasn't complete, but it, it is a good start. Uh, Kristen Cogswell gave us, um, some.
I can, I can make sure we get those out to all. We'll, we'll get copies of that out to all members. I'll work with Ronnie to get that out. Um, in fact, what we'll do is we'll include them, we'll include them in the packet.
Did you get a copy, Mr. Mayor?
I, I have a hard copy, um, and so we, we can work with that. The, the one thing I would kind of like to add to the conversation that was an interesting, um, there were several suppositions that used the term, uh, a conflict of interest, which is a very specific legal definition and meaning. Um, I am a pilot and so what I think what that creates is called a bias, not, not a conflict of interest. There's not financial gains, there's not, um, there isn't a, uh, there is a bias and I acknowledge that and, and, uh, from the beginning, like I said, that I think there were a lot of people who thought I was gonna come in and, and do it. The last mayor had done and, and with a stroke of the pen, sign things and make it go away or fix it and change it. And I didn't think it was appropriate the way it was done previously and I'm, two wrongs don't make a right. And so I set that aside and said, we will address this. Um, we started into that and then a bunch of other things kind of came up. So we, we will get it done, uh, but I think as, as you're having conversations with folks, I, I think it, it's worthy, it's worthwhile to, to make the distinction between a bias, which we all have and, and conflicts of interest. So I, I think that, that felt to me like it was coming into the conversation a lot. And, uh, I appreciate, um, your trust in me and, and, and recognize that I've, I've earned that over a year and a half, but I appreciate, uh, your trust in me to, to handle that situation. Um, I appreciate the comments that were made in, for lack of a better term, in, in, in my defense this morning. And, and I will, uh, continue to, to work to ensure that that trust is well-founded. And I welcome, as I always have, comments or concerns and, and saying, hey, I'm concerned about this or, like I said, I welcome that input. I, I, I try to be as open and transparent and, and, and recognize the perceptions that are out there. So we'll keep that up.
Well, you know, while, while you may be biased because you're a pilot, you also are knowledgeable. Um, where none of the rest of us are pilots, so we don't really understand all the stuff going on up there. And, uh, so we do appreciate some explanation when it's necessary.
But I also would say that's all the more reason why one or two of us should educate ourselves about the situation.
I, I, I will say that-
I think you should all educate to a certain extent.
We all have to.
I will say that I was, Jen Battles and myself were the two that met with the Airport Board over and over again. We wrote up a new interlocal agreement. It was Jen Battles and myself. And I went to Airport Board meetings all summer long and into the fall. And I, I pretty much did become an expert on the running of that airport and what goes on up there. Now, have I totally tried to block all of that out over the last two years? Yes, I have. So I will love a refresher course. That will be wonderful on how things are now because things do change.
And we will do our best to handle it fairly openly and publicly and, 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 uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Consideration to the, pardon?
Amicably.
Amicably, yes, all the way through. And I appreciate, I appreciate the efforts of this board to, to do that. You know, as, as we get into those meetings and there's discussions and, and some people are, are loud and, and, and passionate, that's okay. But my expectation of this board and I hope of all of you of each other is the professionalism and, and step into the role that, that you have all been elected to do, so. I, and I, I, just to clarify, I have not seen anything that concerns me. I've been, I have been very happy and impressed with how everybody has handled themselves throughout this issue. So, so if I haven't told you that, thank you individually, or if you haven't picked that up from our conversations, I'll, I'll openly state it now. Alright, correspondence. Anything other than the, the letters that we've already acknowledged and, and Ronnie has got them, so they will be in the packet next time?
I did get a phone call from one of my constituents that was concerned with the recycling center that she had some odd numbers. She, she said that ten percent of the city residents use the recycling center, yet ninety percent of the other people are still paying for it. And, um, I told her that I would look into the numbers, that I know that there is a budget. And she felt that, um, that providing it for ten percent of the population is, is wasteful.
It's provided for everyone. It's just a DVD set or not.
Exactly.
That's it.
And, and, and I would, I would offer that, I would say ten percent is probably optimistic. But, um, that was, that was the decision and call of council and that is within council's purview to make that call, so.
And I would like to say that, um, doing the budget this year, our, we are not, we did not have to raise fees. And that was kind of, I was on council when that passed, was that, you know, if all of a sudden we have to start increasing those fees, we would reevaluate whether or not it was going to continue. Or if we started losing the services that those fees were covering. You know, if it came down to all we're doing is cardboard, then, you know, it's not really, is it worth, you know, it'd be reeval. But we have not had to do that. It stayed within budget. We're actually getting a little bit of surplus so we can hopefully do some safety improvements there, um, as well as put a little in the bank in case one of the bailers goes bad and we have to get a new baler. So, um, you know, to me, um, I, you know, I think everything's going good.
And the other correspondence, and, and again, just a reminder to council, this is one of those opportunities that you kind of have to slip stuff in. Hey, I'd like to see sessions such on the agenda because I got a, had a conversation with a, with a constituent, so this is, this is a little bit of a, an opportunity for council to, you know, liberally interpretate this agenda item. I'm okay with that. Councilmember Tupin?
Uh, I will not be at the next round of council meeting. Um, I'm taking advantage of fall, so.
Oh, yay.
Thank you, thank you for that heads up. You, you do not require permission from everybody. I will be coming forth with a, uh, I might not. I might, 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 I, actually I will be coming forth to council 'cause I'm gonna be out of town for more than ten days and I do require approval from council, um, so.
Send your wife.
Pardon?
Send your wife.
She, she's taking me. And she knows how to bury the body so that it cannot be found, so I found it good not to argue with her. Um, just, I'll, I'll, we'll, we'll, I'll make that official as we get a little bit closer, but it'll be between Thanksgiving and that first week of December again.
So, yeah, I'm gonna be good on that, just hanging back on to that. Good to know.
I'm sorry, you're, you're, you're correct, my bad. And your second item?
Just a heads up on that, uh, Dan Dropney did reach out. I'm not sure who all heard from Dan, but, uh, sounds like it is getting resolved. So essentially he's had some, uh, concerns with the streets and sidewalks over in, uh, Mountain Villas, Mountain D-Villas. Mountain Springs. There's a lot of mountains and a lot of alpines and not enough Joe Walshes or John Denvers for that matter. Um, but, so there, there was some deterioration and he did find an MOU where that will be maintained and fixed by the city. Um, so I'm happy that his- Um, so I'm happy that his ten years of fighting this will come to an end and he'll actually get what he needs.
Good. And Mike, yeah, was very responsive. Mike was very thoughtful.
I, I would like to add just a little bit of a clarification that it'll be resolved and worked through. I'm not a hundred percent representing that, that means what he gets or what, but, but, but it is being worked out appropriately. And we do have the M U, MOU in the documentation. So there's still a couple of things. Yes.
So that's what matters.
Yes.
For constituents. That is all for me, I believe.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
I just had someone ask me about Eagles Nest and Mayor gave me insight to provide to them, but.
Yeah, the, the update is still, we are waiting for funding sources, but we stand by after ready to take advantage of them as soon as they're available. Anything else? All right. Um, with that, we are at our public close, uh, public comment. This is the final opportunity for the public to have three minutes to address the council on anything within the council's purview. Same rules apply. I'll go ahead and open up public comment. I will look first to the room.
Um, if, uh, yeah.
If you'd stand and state your name and, and, and speak.
Yeah. Uh, my name's Grant. I'm Grant Shaw. I'm, I'm Program Director at the Boys and Girls Club. And I had a couple of questions about the, um, earlier we talked about the, uh, safety of the streets and stuff like that. And I wanted to give some clarification just for my understanding.
And, and just to clarify, this is public comment, not discussion and back and forth. So you, so, so phrase your forms in the phrase of, phrase your questions in the form of a comment or how do I twist that?
We just can't answer it.
Oh, okay. My first time doing this stuff. I'm a little nervous. Sorry.
Pressing it, man. Don't worry.
Okay.
Don't worry. We'll be following up.
When will you see, or what, what timeline do you guys see this being implemented at?
That ended with the question.
You can have, you can have a question. It's okay.
Continue with your, your question slash comment.
Okay.
Just don't expect us to answer.
There we go. There we go. Yep.
Um, one of the things I heard earlier was talking about like closing off the street. I think it would be a good idea to give parking passes to like the staff of the Boys and Girls Club and some other staff of the toll center. I'm like, what is that place called? This is very interesting. I should know this. Um, I just think that's, we, if that's the route they want to go, that would be a good route for us as well. And, um, yeah, I think that's, I think that's, that's just my opinion on that one.
Did you say parking passes?
Yeah, like a parking pass from the city, like it says, like City of Red Lodge parking pass. And it's like each person that works at the club or the facilities gets one. That's, that's just, it might work, it might not. Like that's just one, one thing I thought about.
Yep.
What?
Suggestions.
Suggestions, sorry. Um, another one I suggested was possibly flashing stop signs or something like that because I, I don't know what the things were called, the U-shaped things they were talking about earlier, but in my head I'm thinking, oh.
An arch?
No, the arch, it's a U-shaped.
Oh, the V, the V thing.
The V thing, sorry. Not U-shaped. The arch, actually I wanted to bring that up too. I really like that idea for it because if, one, it doesn't impede the snow plowing. I, I don't think it's going up. It's very thin and the snow plow can go right under it. And it's a very noticeable change in the environment. People can see that. And a lot of the times you put a stop sign up, you put a road paint, people just will still go through that. Um, and I think an arch will really get them to slow down with maybe a stop sign, or not a stop sign, a speed limit sign. Like between the park, there's no, there's nothing there. There's, it doesn't take fifteen, it doesn't take anything like that. Maybe some more stop signs would be a beneficial thing, especially the flashing kind because people will notice that. And it, it really, from where I, I come from, they have flashing, they have color on the road, but when the snow comes, it gets buried. But if you have a stop sign above it and the snow won't see that, it will be really beneficial for the safety of not only the public, but the kids and my staff and other staff and animals too. Because when animals walk through that park in that driveway, I've seen many deer in there.
Thank, thank you for wrapping it up because your time is up.
Perfect. That was.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Other, other comments from the public? Looking in the chamber, saying nothing, looking online? Going once, twice, three times, seeing no, no request for public comment? We'll go ahead and close the public comment. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll move to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.